All right, I'd like to call to order the January ninth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Columbia Heights School Board, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, will you do the roll call, please?
I will. Sorry, can you hear me? Maderis?
Here.
Granland?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Hool?
Here.
Petway?
Here.
Superintendent Stenbik?
Here.
Thank you. Before we start, I just want to take a moment to reflect. Our school and local community has lost a young life on December twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. I would like to take a moment of silence to remember Columbia Heights' two thousand and twenty-three graduate, Jaden Klein. Thank you. Our mission statement is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. We are very excited to start tonight with a Highlander highlight, and I'm going to turn it over to Chris Polly.
Oh, I'm sorry. I am currently trying to put a baby to bed. We're multitasking. But, yes, we are here to celebrate and acknowledge Jack Isrelson, staff writer for the Heights Herald, the Columbia Heights High School student-run newspaper. He did an incredible story on the need for more bike and pedestrian-friendly infrastructure in the city of Columbia Heights and won a Best of Snow Award. Snow, S-N-O, stands for Student Newspaper Online. That is the platform that we use to publish the electronic version of the Heights Herald at heightsharold.org, and every week, the editors of Snow, Student Newspaper Online comb through all of the student newspapers online and choose the best of the best. And Jack's story about bike and pedestrian-friendly infrastructure in Columbia Heights was acknowledged and published on their nationally-recognized and available website, bestofsnow.com. And he got a cool certificate and write up in a couple of local papers about the accomplishment. And I've said it before, but I'll say it again, Jack's one of our most dedicated, not just students in the district, but also community members. He is the perfect fit for joining the Herald since he's so politically active locally and beyond, so I hope, is Jack in the room tonight?
Yep, Jack is. Yep, Jack is. Jack, would you please come forward if you're comfortable? Would you like to come and say a few words as well?
I'd like to thank my family for coming over here and supporting me. I'd like to thank Mr. Polly for supporting me through all this time, and of course, all of my, the edgiers-in-chief, Carol Angrale and Emery Kussler. And I'm just really honored that this story was received, was recognized nationally because this is one of the topics that has really gotten me fired up and one that has been, the one that was really interesting to me since, like, the start of the pandemic, so I'm glad I wrote this story, and I'm just happy it's recognized nationally so we can get more progress done in Heights.
Excellent.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. We'll have you, we'll have you stay right there for just a second, Jack. So congratulations to Jack Isrelson, who received a Best of N-I-S-N-O. And thank you to Chris Polly for all of the work that you are doing and continue to do with our students and encouraging them in these endeavors and all the support you provide. So, thank you. Board members, would you like to say anything to Jack? Mary?
Jack, it's been just so wonderful to get to know you and to see your passion, and also just how wonderful you are at going out into the community, doing these things, and making sure that people know that just because you are a high school student doesn't mean that you don't have really important things to say. I have been so impressed over the past few years, seeing you not only speak here at School Board, but seeing you speak in other venues as well, City Council, at different events throughout the city. So, thank you so much for your advocacy. Please do not slow down on it. We need more people like you.
Appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Laura?
I would love to echo exactly what Mary says. I mean, I see you out there all the time, you know, and just involved, and, and this is another, another great example of the different contributions you can make to our communities, so we're very grateful that you're doing this. And again, continue, okay? Please. Good job.
Thank you. Thanks. Congratulations, Jack. We have certificates, so we're gonna have you come up here and accept that, and then we're gonna have you shake the board member's hands, too. Okay? Thank you, and congratulations, Jack, and kudos to his family. You've got a great kid there, so we're glad that he's part of our community. Jack, you're welcome to stay for the meeting, otherwise, you know, you got homework to do. If you're ready to go, you can go, too. Next, we'll move on to our agenda approval, adjustments, and announcements. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Laura, in a second?
Second.
Second by Jessica. Is there any discussion? Hearing done, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next, we have our announcements. On January fifteenth, Monday, there is no school. January sixteenth, Tuesday, at five-thirty PM, the School Board is a School Board Work Session here in the Community Room. January twenty-third, Tuesday at five PM, is the Subcommittee on Policy here in the Community Room. January twenty-third, at five PM, is the Subcommittee on Community Engagement in the Training Room. January twenty-third, at six PM, is our regular School Board Meeting here in the Community Room. January twenty-sixth, there is no school. January twenty-ninth, Monday, we have a joint meeting of the Columbia Heights City Council and the Columbia Heights School Board at the Columbia Heights City Hall. Next, we'll move on to our citizens and employee representatives. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the School Board. The Board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The Board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time, and time is limited to three minutes per speaker. And we're back. We had several members of our teaching staff who came to address the Board to discuss challenges for teachers, how the district is allocating funds, benefit packages, challenges with EL classes and scheduling, class sizes, available funding, Ed Minnesota's analysis on school district funds, and support for students. Next, we'll move on to our consent agenda. On our consent agenda, we have the Personnel Report, our School Board Minutes from the December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting, and the November, two thousand and twenty-three Treasure Report. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Laura, in a second?
Second.
Second by Julie. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our Acknowledgement of Contributions. This is a resolution, so I will read the Acknowledgement of Contributions. Acknowledgement of Contributions Resolution. Whereas Minnesota Statute one twenty-three B dot zero-two permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose, and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the Board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools, Independent School District Number Thirteen, that the School Board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background and the amount of two thousand eight hundred thirty-seven dollars. The detailed backgrounds include value of kind, value and kind. A donation of books was made to Columbia Academy Media Center from Joanne Zarick for student needs, a value of eighty-seven fifty-eight. A donation of winter boots was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools from Saint Timothy's Lutheran Church for student needs, estimated value of two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. And a donation of snow pants, scarves, hats, and gloves and mittens was made to Valley View for student needs for a value of two hundred dollars. Total fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four monetary contributions to date, thirty-eight thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-two cents. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Julie, in a second?
Second.
Second by Michelle. Any discussion? Mary?
As always, thank you to the community who is able to support our, our students and their needs, so we're lucky to have such a generous community.
Agreed. Thank you. Any other discussion? As this is a resolution, Michelle, will you do the roll, please?
Yes. Maderis?
Aye.
Hool?
Aye.
Granland?
Aye.
Petway?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Thank you. Next, we have our discussion reports and information items, and we'll start with our reports from members of the Board, and we will start with Laura.
How long has it been? It's been a while. I'm trying to remember whether or not Cinderella had played last time we had our meeting. Has that been since then, or was that prior?
That was before.
Was it before? It was still really good, so I don't know. I'm, I'm still going, what did we do? It was like that.
The songs are still echoing in my head.
I know, I keep thinking about it. They were so amazing, I loved it. But anyway, mostly as far as my Board activities, it was just this evening with the chair meeting prior to this, the special call meeting, as well as the organizational meeting. That's it for me.
Thank you, Laura. Michelle?
Yes, so I actually attended MSBA's Organizational Meeting webinar back in December so that I can get a better understanding of how the meeting would go and what I would need to be paying attention to, so that was pretty nice, very informative. I also attended movie night at the high school, sponsored by the city council, where they showed Big Hero Six. So my daughter and I went to that, and there was free popcorn, it was fun, and it was just nice to see all of the students just kind of have somewhere to go after school or in the evening times. It was like going to the movies, so that was fun. And I also attended Columbia Heights had a Santa City Tour, and that was, it ended at Mersham Hall, so we went and we did some activities and colored a little bit, we did a scavenger hunt, had some cocoa cider cookies, and took pictures with Santa, and it was amazing seeing the lit-up city vehicles with, you know, with Santa hanging out of the firetruck. So that was a lot of fun, and I also attended all the meetings before this one, the special call meeting and the organizational meeting.
Thank you, Michelle. Mary?
So I have had several phone calls with Chair Mueller, with Member Maderis, with Member Petway, Superintendent Stenbik, text messages, emails, all those things. I was able to have a conversation with Mayor Marquez Simula about our upcoming meeting, joint meeting with the City Council and the School Board on the twenty-ninth of January. I've spoken with a lot of families, students, staff, about a lot of concerns related to contract negotiation, staffing, number of students in classes. We received a great email from Councilmember Spriggs about some of the upcoming changes that the city sees as possibly impacting the school district in a positive way, which I imagine we're gonna get more information on that as time goes on and possibly at our meeting on the twenty-ninth. I attended the AMSD meeting last Friday, and then right before this one, the closed session and the organizational meeting as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica?
Sure. I attended the organizational meeting prior to this meeting. I had conversations with Vice Chair Granland, and other than that, I don't have a report this evening.
Thank you. Julie?
I met with Superintendent Stenbik and went over the finances for September, October. I selected several expenditures from all different categories, reviewing them for appropriateness and appropriate support, proper sign-offs, making sure that it was approved. Expenses looked perfectly normal, I haven't seen anything unusual, and it appears we're following all our policies. I also reviewed our internal policies that we have in place, as well as job descriptions in the finance area, and find them to be adequate. So I do feel like we're handling our finances very well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Julie. For my report, I also attended the chair meeting this evening, the special called meeting, and the organizational meeting. I had conversations with Member Granland, Member Palmer, several conversations with Superintendent Stenbik, and had many conversations with parents, family, students, and community members. Superintendent Stenbik?
Yes, last week I attended the visitation for our former student, Jaden Klein, and we had many conversations with community members about that. I did know Jaden well, and she will be greatly missed. A couple of weeks prior to winter break, I met with Mayor Marcus Simula and Police Chief Austin about the Be Smart Program, which is an informational campaign on gun safety and locking up weapons, and so we will be bringing a resolution to the Board, I believe, next month, later this month or next month, and hopefully we can move forward with that, given particular our current circumstances. The district admin team engaged in our eleventh negotiations meeting with Local Seven Ten and will enter into mediation in early February. I have reached out to all of our local representatives to invite them to an upcoming Board meeting to share with us their legislative platforms. I've heard back from one so far, so we'll keep, keep working on getting that date. This week, we are kicking off our community engagement sessions for the strategic plan. Student, staff, parents, and community members will have the opportunity to provide input and feedback this month and also into February. The consultants will be at various school events, and they will be conducting focus groups, and also a survey will be widely available beginning February seventh. This is a long and extensive planning process, and we anticipate having a final product in June. Director and Stunkel and I continue to meet weekly with the consultant from CISO. This morning, I attended the Lead and Learn Meeting facilitated by Executive Director Niemboe, in which the principals provided progress toward our head, heart, and hand literacy goals. The elementary schools, for example, began implementing functional phonics and functional morphology just a few short months ago, and they're already seeing progress. The month, this month, the school will be conducting mid-year benchmark assessments, so more to come on that. I attended the monthly AMSD Board Meeting and heard a presentation from the MDE on career and college pathways. They received a grant to conduct research to help understanding the student's progression from high school to post-secondary and career workforce participation. They're basing this approach on the two thousand and fifteen research by Vischer and Stern, which examines new possibilities for such pathways. So this work is aligned to the work that we are doing with our STEM pathways here in Columbia Heights. So I'm, I've got my eye on that, hopefully more to come there. We received communication from the Minnesota School Boards Association acknowledging Member Maderis for completing all four phases of the MSBA School Board Workshop Series. So I think we need to present her with our, with this certificate in just a moment, and since our last Board meeting, I had communication with Member Granland, Member Petway, Member Hool, and Chair Mueller.
Thank you. Are you ready, Jessica?
Your turn.
Yes, this is another one, like, super quick, so, kudos.
I saw your name added to the list earlier.
I should keep that.
We're presenting Jessica with her certificate from MSBA for the completion of the Minnesota School Boards Association School Board Workshop Series, Phase One, Two, Three, and Four. For those in the room, Phases One and Two are required, Three and Four are just for fun.
Over to you.
I feel like we should, do we clap? Did anybody clap?
Could you get up and take a bow?
I gotta draw the line somewhere.
Jack got four well-deserved rounds of applause, so I think we can give you one. Fantastic. Thank you, Superintendent Stenbik.
Chair Mueller, can I ask a question of Superintendent Stenbik's report? You had talked about the strategic planning Phase One process, and I know we've gotten some information as a Board about those reach-outs and those engagement conversations happening throughout the month of January, and I'm just wondering, given the Board's substantial discussion that we've had around engagement with stakeholders in this process, if it would be possible for us to get from you or from CISO some more detailed information about how those reach-outs are occurring? So, yeah, a schedule, and, and I guess the, the population group. So I know we'll be having some, like, surveys that are going out to community members and families and parents, but I know there are also Phase One engagement sessions happening within our district and talking to our, our staff, and so I just wonder if we could get a little more detailed information from CISO on that?
Yes, absolutely, but we can put that in the, in the Board update.
Okay, great, thank you.
Great question. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to our action items. We have Director Hennekenz with our FY twenty-three audit.
Thank you, Chair Mueller, members of the Board, and Superintendent Stenbik. This evening, for you to ask for acceptance of the FY twenty-three audit, this was presented in detail, excuse me, in detail from our independent auditing firm, MMKR, on the December twelfth Board Meeting, and so this evening, just seeking acceptance of the audit as presented at the December meeting.
Thank you, Director Hennekenz. Can I get a motion to approve the audited comprehensive financial report for FY two thousand and twenty-three as presented?
So moved.
Julie, in a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Any discussion? I will just make a comment that, as Director Hennekenz said, we had extensive conversation discussion at our December meeting with the auditor here present. I also want to thank Member Hool, who asked a lot of really good questions of the auditor. This was our first time with this particular auditing company, and so it was really great questions that you had asked during that meeting as well, so thank you for that. Any other discussion?
I did have a question.
Yes.
I know you were looking at me because I had raised my hand. So if people want to see this information, I assume it is somewhere on our website, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Where could people find it on our website?
It's under the Departments, so under District, Departments, Finance, and then the reports are under their Financial Reports.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Yep.
Julie?
I just want to thank you, Brian, for, excuse me, Director Hennekenz, for everything you've done. I mean, obviously, this is a long process, and audit goes through almost six months, and your staff putting in the long hours to get these, get the new requirements under your belt, and providing all the documentation that the auditor requests isn't easy, and so I just want to acknowledge the fact that you guys worked really hard, and I appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
Jessica, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I, I know we, as others have mentioned, we had substantial conversation about this at the last meeting. I know that we had talked about some changes or corrections that were being made to the report in a couple of areas, and so I just want to confirm that those changes and corrections have been made since the December meeting.
Yes, they were.
That was all I, thanks.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing done, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Director Hennekenz. Next, moving on to Board topics. Do we have any Board topics?
I have one, just wanted, quick, give a reminder on a couple of things. Number one, the robotics team is finishing their season this month. They have an all-day meet on Saturday, the twentieth, so super excited. These kids have worked really hard. It is a much longer season, I think, than other seasons, and these kids, I think something that most people don't realize, they give up access to a lot of other things. They, these are kids who may be interested in doing the play, or swimming, or basketball, and they can't, just from the length of robotics, so these students put in a lot, a lot of time and a lot, a lot of hard work that we don't think talk about a lot, but just want to shout out to them and to their coach, Ms. Orkut, who is doing a fantastic job trying to support these kids, doing all of these wonderful things. And then, completely in a different topic, traffic drop-off on Forty-Ninth continues to be a really big struggle, so just a reminder to families, and something I'm gonna talk about more with Superintendent Stenbik and Chair Mueller ahead of our January twenty-ninth meeting, but there, as a heads-up to families, please do not stop on Forty-Ninth to let your child out. I don't care what school it is, it's really unsafe, and I've seen, every day at drop-off, I see multiple cars doing it regardless of if we have a police officer directing traffic, and do it right in front of the police officer. And so, just a reminder that that may save a little bit of time here and there, but it creates a very, very unsafe situation for children, for people who are in the cars driving, for the people who are helping to direct traffic. So please, I know it's a pain, we, it is a half-an-hour time period in there, so please do not stop on Forty-Ninth and let your kid out. That's just, it's so unsafe, so, thank you.
Thank you. Other Board topics? Jessica?
Well, it's two thousand and twenty-four already, so I'm gonna have us all hearken back to some previous discussions that we've had as a Board, now that we're coming up on this new year, and I'm sure it's thing, these are things that Chair Mueller is already tracking in terms of our future meetings, but I just want to remind the Board that we had discussed revisiting our primary election resolution in the spring, and so that's coming up, as well as we had some discussion at the work session about officer transition, and maybe conversations that can be had with, between new officers and the Chair and the Superintendent, sort of about how they view their role, or how they, some of maybe goals or activities that they would like to pursue in those officer positions, so, just as a reminder. Thank you.
Yeah, great, thank you. Other Board topics?
I don't have any.
Michelle?
So I did just see earlier that for the strategic planning with CISO, that we all got emails, I just want to make sure that everybody got it, and that they're gonna be scheduling to speak with them before the end of January, so I just wanted to put that out there as a reminder.
Thank you. And then also, just remember our, our learning activity that we're doing, that we're having our first discussion on the signs of reading in, at our January meeting, our work session.
I just quickly want to add, for those of you that are still in the room, at our organizational meeting, we did change the start time for School Board Meetings to six PM moving forward. That information's obviously gonna come out when this gets posted online, and I know there's gonna be other communication, but I just wanted to give the folks in the room the heads-up on that as well. And I know there's gonna be other communication, but I just wanted to give the folks in the room the heads up on that as well.
Thank you. Lots of board topics today. Any other board topics? Any other others for Mary?
Special night.
All right. Um, with no other board topics, we will adjourn at seven fifty-two.